Good evening, I'd like to call the February 4th, 2025 meeting of the City of North Bend to order. Let's see, will the Deputy Clerk Jennifer Borum please call roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Mark Jocelyn.
Present.
Councilmember Brendan Elwood.
Present.
He's online. I can see you're there. Councilmember Alan Gothel.
Here.
Councilmember Heather Colen.
Here.
Councilmember Christina Rustic.
Here.
Councilmember Suzanne Torgerson.
Here.
And Councilmember Errol Trimalata.
Here.
Thank you. All councilmembers are present, Your Honor.
I jumped on that. Thank you Deputy Clerk, would you like to lead us in the flag salute tonight?
Sure.
Well, good evening, everybody, whether you're online or in person, we love seeing you come in person, so come one, come all. I would like to move on here, we will now move on to consent agenda, we have eight items on our consent agenda, can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion by, I'll tell them, second by Ms. Colen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anti-opposed? Motion carries and is unanimous, before we move on to citizen comments, as indicated on tonight's agenda, if you are attending remotely and would like to submit a public comment, please submit your written comments via in-person drop-off fax email to sopa doll at northbendwa.gov by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting, we are no longer taking public comments at this time. If you're attending remotely via Zoom unless you have reached out to our City Clerk in advance of the meeting for accommodations, we will now move on to citizen comments, at this time, if you would like to comment on an item that's not on our agenda tonight, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time, if you've requested accommodation with the City Clerk and will wish to speak during citizen comments, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the record, anybody interested to participate tonight? Come on up, hi Jeff, welcome. Nice to see you.
Jeff King, 466 Meadow Drive Southeast, North Bend, Washington, 98045. I'd like to talk about the street corner of Riverside Orchard Street where there's a new sidewalk and a ramp, and when I walk in the morning, I walk against the traffic, I don't walk with the traffic because there's no sidewalks on Orchard Street. But when you get there to the corner of Riverside and Orchard, there's a ramp, like a wheelchair ramp, that you gotta go in, but if you want to continue on across the park, you gotta go back out through Orchard Street and then go across the street, there's no ramp to go directly west, the ramp only faces north. And so what I want to say is that that corner needs to have like two ramps, one that goes west and one that goes north, there's, it's only a north ramp. And so it's also hazardous for schoolchildren because they wait at the corner for the bus. So they don't get to go directly west, they have to go north on Orchard Street and then come around the corner to step up to the school bus. I think that's just a hazard for schoolchildren and pedestrians, especially if you're trying to cross the street to go to the park. So that's, that's what I want to say is that curb, curb needs to be reconstructed. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment, do you have anybody online?
No one online tonight.
Okay, quiet, online. All right, we're gonna move on to introductions at this time, item number nine, AB 25-010, motion authorizing work order for QCC for SCADA slash telemetry support. Mr. DeBerg, you're up tonight, it's good to see you and can't wait to have you talk to us about this.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
So the City of North Bend owns and operates a water and wastewater system, and both of those systems are controlled and I guess giving data to a SCADA slash telemetry system. We've got a significant amount of automation that saves many, many man-hours worth of work if, as compared to not having that automation. The SCADA system also provides data necessary for reporting to regulatory agencies, and that data can be used to troubleshoot issues as they arise with, with the various systems. As of right now, we only have one staff member that's got very strong working knowledge of that SCADA system, how it's put together, how it operates, and he is set to retire on March 1st of this year. So we need some additional support. However, that staff member's name is Chris Cody. In the past eight years, the time that he's been with us, he has done a very good job of updating that system to current standards, so it is really a state-of-the-art system. With that, that has significantly increased the reliability of the system as compared to when he started. So he's really kind of worked himself out of a job. With the increased reliability, there's just not that many issues to resolve with it, to correct with it. So we don't think we can really support a full-time staff person to maintain that system. As such, we are proposing a work order with Quality Controls Corporation under their existing on-call contract with us. They have been involved in every upgrade that we've done. They've performed the programming for all of the sites, they've replaced the programmable logic controllers, the HMIs, various other components. So they've got a very strong understanding of the system, they do get work, they are responsive to us when we call with questions. So we've got really a very good working relationship with them and wish to continue that. So what we are proposing tonight is a work order with them under which they will provide maintenance services and on-call emergency support. The maintenance services will be quarterly visits from them to just check the system out, make sure everything's functioning correctly, perform necessary software and hardware updates, and otherwise keep it in good working order. And that portion is estimated to cost about $38,000 a year. The emergency support, we, it's a best guess, we don't have a crystal ball, so we are asking for up to $25,000 a year. All of this work will be built on a time and materials basis, so we're only paying for work performed. It's not a fixed cost contract, so there's no chance of us losing money or not paying or, excuse me, paying for work that wasn't done. So overall, I think it's a really good contract for us and definitely recommend it, so with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeBerg, council, do you have any clarifying questions, Mr. DeBerg? I see your hand.
I see it's in the packet, but just for the education of myself and the public that's listening, what does SCADA, SCADA stand for?
Stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition.
And what does that mean for us?
It's like it, like it says, like the name implies, it allows us to control the various systems that are hooked to it and that feeds us data again for regulatory requirements and for troubleshooting. So automation is a big part of it. So for instance, in the water system, we have reservoirs that store water and the system will sense when the reservoirs get to a low, low level and then will automatically start the source pumps to refill those reservoirs. When it reaches the full level, it turns the pumps off. So it operates 24/7. Again, saves significant number of staff hours, if we didn't have the system and were manually operating both the water and sewer systems, we, my best guess, we would need probably an additional two people in the water department and probably four extra people in the sewer department to manually operate everything every day 24/7. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. If things went really wrong where SCADA couldn't handle it, who would be the human that they reach out to?
Um, the system, we do have an alarming software that's part of this package. And when things go wrong, it calls the on-call operator, whether it's on the water side or the sewer side. So we've always got somebody on call ready to respond and they get those alerts and they respond as necessary. Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Colen, anybody else from council have anything? There's a lot of hands, here we go. Okay.
Clarifying question, current contracts either over the past eight years that the relationship has existed, the annual amount we have paid the consultant, or is there, you know, out of the 63,000, is there some of this that is already going out the door in an annual expense to these folks to support the system already?
We do not have a existing maintenance and support contract with them. So this $63,000 is replacing an FTE that I believe costs the city about $160,000 a year. So we're doing it this way, we're gonna see about $100,000 of your savings.
Ms. Rustic.
So I definitely appreciate the, the cost savings there. The, each of these types of systems tend to be very specific, depend on manufacturer. And so one of the risks of this cost savings is not having a subject matter expert on the staff. But you had a great answer for that when we talked about it at TPW, so I was wondering.
We do, actually.
Counsel.
So our new wastewater treatment plant manager, Susan Welland, is well-versed in the SCADA universe. She's designed and assembled several different SCADA systems for several different entities. So worse comes to worse, if QCC doesn't respond for some reason, which I think is highly unlikely, Susan does have that background and she is capable of responding.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions from council or Brendan, I'm gonna check in with you, do you have any? Well done. Okay, anybody online? Nope. Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with the City Clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual, virtual platform and we'll take your comments after in-person comments, please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the record. All quiet. Okay. Let's see, Ms. Colen, Councilmember Colen, would you please make a motion?
Yes, motion to approve AB 25-010, authorizing a work order with Quality Controls Corporation for Maintenance and Emergency Support for SCADA Telemetry Systems in an amount not to exceed 63,000.
Second. Do you have anything you'd like to add in motion?
I'm hopeful that this will be a great system, that is cost-saving and effective, and I have high expectations that it will be great, thank you.
Thank you for all those that might be listening in tonight, I've neglected to hit the button at the right time, so there's a little tiny gap, I apologize for that. And Ms. Rustic, do you have anything to add?
I just gonna be thankful and appreciative to Chris for all of his hard work in getting us where we're at. And I think this is a perfect next step, so thank you.
Any other comments council would like to make? No? Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB 25-010, authorizing a work order with Quality Controls Corporation for Maintenance and Emergency Support for SCADA slash telemetry systems in the amount not to exceed $63,000, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I heard, I heard you Brendan, thank you for that, everybody, we passed that. We passed that unanimously, we're gonna move on to item number 10, AB 25-011, resolution accepting RRFB project. Somebody want to explain what RRFB is for the listening public while we're at it? Mr. Regos?
I sure can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council, RRFB stands for rectangular rapid flashing beacon. And this is in page 75 in our packet tonight, and this is a bit of a housekeeping item. We're at the tail end of the project, and we're ready to close out with the contractor, this was for three RRFBs that were constructed in the City of North Bend in 2024, those locations were at Ballarat Avenue, Northeast and Snoqualmie Valley Trail, also at Southeast Mountsi Road and Snoqualmie Valley Trail, and the third one was North Bend Way and Orchard Drive that replaced an older version. So this is a win for the city, this, these function as a public safety benefit. It's a quality of, of life improvement for our residents. These push buttons, when the lights flash, they really lower people's anxiety when they're about to cross a crosswalk rather than carrying an orange flag or putting their arms up in the air, they actually, people actually stop at these, so these are really nice to have, I would like to build more in the future. Maybe we can fund some of these, they aren't inexpensive unfortunately, but we're seeing more and more of these in cities around us and I think they do improve public safety, so just want to close out this project and that concludes this agenda bill.
Thank you, Mr. Regos, council, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Regos? Well, I'm gonna say something, I am such a big fan of these personally, I've waited for years to see this kind of project go forward and and I'm really enthusiastic when I see people actually hitting that button, makes me smile every time, so thank you for that. Okay, oh, pardon me.
So today, I was walking down North Bend Way, I wanted to cross into Dahlgren to get across to the park. And the flashing beacon is there, but in order to get to it, you kind of have to walk through the storm drainage to push the button. And I didn't want to, so I ran, you know, like a normal person, oh, I don't see any traffic, so is there a way we could move that or not?
I don't have that memorized, but I will take a look at that tomorrow and we can certainly put some asphalt down or is it, maybe it's a drainage ditch or a drainage pipe or a rain garden or something that prevents easy access.
Not convenient, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will take a look at that.
Thank you, any other, oh, Ms. Rustic.
I just wanted to point out, we were pleased that this project, which was, you know, $266,000 and some change, actually came in under by $32,000. So good job on managing the project, but maybe there's a little contingency left to make it through tweaks, so.
Anybody else I might have missed? Brendan, just checking in. Okay. Thank you, all right, let's see, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come to the podium at this time. If you have request accommodation with the City Clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the record. Why, I love repeating myself, I apologize. Okay, all right, Ms. Colen, we're gonna go back to you. Is that the motion?
Yes, thank you, motion to approve AB 25-011, a resolution accepting the 2024 RRFB capital project as complete and authorizing release of retainage.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, it's kind of matchy-matchy. Okay, motion made, Mrs. Colen and seconded by Ms. Rustic. Would you like to speak to your motion, Ms. Colen?
I love it, they just make sense and they do work and it does make people feel safer, including myself.
Excellent, Ms. Rustic.
I'll just add that it's one more example of, you know, our commitment to the public safety for residents in the, in the city.
All right, anybody else would like to say anything? Errol?
Yeah, these are highly impactful, super significant. My neighbors and I use a number of these that are active specifically, the Mountsi Road and Snoqualmie Valley Trail one. One comment would be, I think they're so impactful that I would hope council would agree to work these in the budget everywhere possible and possibly mark with your help to see based on it being a public safety and, and a number of different impacts to, to the public, where we might be able to pull funds from to, that we qualify to help offset some of these costs. But I do think it's something significant that all, although a big-ticket item, also a big-ticket impact, so hope we can look at that further as the year goes on as a whole.
Errol, anybody else have a comment to make? At this time? No? Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB 25-011, a resolution accepting the 2024 RRFB capital project as complete and authorizing release of retainage, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you again, everybody. Moving on to item number 11, AB 25-012, motion authorizing contract with PH Consulting for Park and Main Intersection Project, back to you, Mr. Regos, fill us in, and thank you.
All right, thank you, this particular agenda bill is not a housekeeping item, this is a engineering contract proposal with PH Consulting who we have used numerous times in the past, and this is for a transportation improvement at the Park Street Main Avenue intersection. We're about 20% done with the project at this point, so we've had some concept, conceptual site plans laid out for us at that intersection, we had a rigorous public outreach effort where we contacted at least 20 to 25 property owners or business owners near that intersection. We also hosted an open house here in the fall of 2024 where numerous residents came, we had poster boards of various options on the board that we talked about, so this is the next step. With this contract, this consultant would prepare plans, specifications and estimates so that we can advertise this project for construction. My thought is, is that we would perform the design in 2025 and possibly construct this project in 2026. We could apply for grants later in 2025 when we have a better idea on how much this project will cost. And this project does include two RRFBs across Park Streets, so that will improve public safety in that area of town, we will reduce the length of those crosswalks across Park Street. There is a Montessori school right nearby with lots of little, little kids, so this is a, a quality of life improvement, a public safety improvement. Drivers are coming off of I-90 where they're traveling 70 miles an hour plus, then hitting SR202 where they're driving 40 miles an hour or so, coming into our downtown, we don't want them driving 40 miles an hour, so we're gonna improve the safety of this intersection by providing bulbouts and RRFBs, et cetera, so people are driving 25 miles an hour and the speed limit. That's the plan, that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Regos, and any clarifying questions from council? Mr. Regos? No? Okay, Ms. Colen?
I'm sorry.
Don't be.
Not really, so it are, the, the plans aren't finalized.
No, this, this contract is with an engineering firm that will prepare the plans.
So we have an option to on Park and Main by Huck's Daughters, there's a big bump out that gives you a little swishy-swish.
Are you talking about the center line, the yellow center line striping there?
I'm talking about right before you get to the drive-through for Huck's Daughters.
Yeah, the yellow center line has, has a stagger at that location, correct?
So we could maybe modify that, so.
The reason we have that is because we provided angle parking downtown a couple of years ago, there was a request from previous city councils to increase the number of angle parking or increase the number of parking stalls downtown, one of the ideas we had was to create angle parking stalls near the library and also near the senior center, so the reason there's that quick taper or stagger, whatever you want to call it, is probably for that last one or two angle parking stalls. The speed through that area with the Huck's Daughter entrance and Ace Hardware is very low, it's on the order of probably 10 miles per hour is what people are driving, so when there's a sharp taper like that, it's not unsafe when the speeds are very low, so.
Thank you, Mr. Regos, anybody else from council have any questions? Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time, come on. Hi Stephen, welcome.
Thank you, Stephen Matlock, 804 Northeast 9th Street, North Bend. I just have a question because this is the first time I've seen this. My concern is about the entrance into the Bartels drunk parking lot. Right now, there are two places to go in, one is, I believe, on this map in the left quadrant where you can turn going west on Park Street into the lot, or if you're coming north on 202, you go through the intersection and you get to the little entryway to get to the front of Bartels. When this center line curb goes into effect, will the parking lot and the entryway on 202 support the traffic? Or what's the, what's the plan to accommodate people who missed? Excuse me, who came down Park Street because they didn't realize they had to go all the way through the intersection to get to the entryway into the parking lot? What is the way that they'll have to get back to the entryway into the parking lot, will they have to go around a block? I, I would hope that what we have, and this is a plan to let people know about how to proceed into the Bartels parking lot, so they're not either stopping traffic on 202 or stopping traffic on Park puzzled by the fact they can't turn left into the parking lot anymore. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody online? No? Okay, Ms. Colen, would you like to present this motion?
Yes, thank you. Motion to approve AB 25-012, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with PH Consulting for the Park Street and Main Avenue Intersection Design Capital Project in an amount not to exceed $148,650 in a form and content approved by the city attorney.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, motion made by Ms. Colen, seconded by Ms. Torgerson. Ms. Colen, would you like to add anything to your comment?
We definitely need some improvements at this intersection and I'm glad that we are working on it.
Excellent, Ms. Torgerson, do you have any comments to make?
I concur, this intersection has been a little bit troublesome and I think we're headed in the right direction.
Excellent, anybody else? Hi, Errol.
I actually have a question. Are there funding up opportunities for this, not only a study, but the future work that would come out of study?
Yeah, you bet, we can apply for grants for this particular project. It often helps to have a shovel-ready set of plans so that you have a, have a, a known cost for what you're applying for, and we'll know that later in the year. $148,000 may, may sound like a lot, we have plenty of transportation impact fees to cover this, but this project could cost, I, I don't have a cost estimate with me, but it could cost three-quarters of a million dollars, it could cost 800,000, 600,000, 900,000, I don't know what it is right now because it hasn't been designed, but certainly there's grants available out there for us, a lot of different possible sources.
Yeah, so 148 would come from the impact fees, so that's, that's the bucket this would pull from and then the set of plans that could be scattered among PSRC or PR, multiple options.
Could be CDBG, Community Development Block Grants, could be FHWA, PSRC, TIB, lots of options.
And then when the studies or when the results of this is, is done, is it effectively, how are we gonna view that, is it like a baked plan, is it something we can do in phases, is something we could phase back, well, like what's your expectation of?
This is a small enough project that I, I see this being as a, as a one-phase project, I would probably like to do this outside of our busiest months of June, July, August, maybe that's May too. So we just have more tourism in town those months, it seems to be, but then we impact school buses a little bit if it's September, October, so there's almost a no-win. But it's probably a couple-month construction project, I don't anticipate that we're gonna close this intersection at all, we may have some traffic control. We may have some traffic control where, where one lane is closed during construction. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just something.
Uh, thanks. Um, right, very exciting. I, there was a public, an, or an open house, or the public came and shared different o- options, and I see some of that reflected here. Um, what will be brought to us is, you know, back to the city is a set of plans. I wanted to just highlight task eight uh, in the scope of work, overhead utility undergrounding, and encourage um, that it stayed uh, top of mind. The city requires often developers to underground uh, the current and future developments. I think the city should honor that same sort of approach when possible. Uh, specifically under deliverables, it says underground conversion plan specifications and estimates for undergrounding if authorized. So I'm raising it to encourage that it be authorized. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, the motion before us is.
Mayor?
Oh.
You have Brendan online?
Brendan, I apologize. I didn't see you waving.
That's okay. I couldn't find, I couldn't find my mouse to unmute, so thank you, Your Honor.
Um.
You're welcome.
And a, and a quick, quick clarifying questions, uh, question, uh, Mark, um, under task zero zero seven, the traffic analysis. Um, the clarifying question is, that I have, and some testimony just kinda sparked it to my mind, is that when you're turning right off of Bendigo onto Park and that left turn into Bartels, will the traffic analysis be able to determine the safety of that right away into Bartels? And the context for my question is, is I frequent this area quite a bit, and um, I see a lot of what I would deem as hazardous traffic flow from people trying to turn left into Bartels, from people coming out of Bartels to turn left onto Park Street. I know there's a, I think there's a double yellow line there, but, I mean, my, my gut is that, you know, just seeing it, it's not safe, but I don't know what the, the, the science would say on that. Will that be, would that be included in this traffic analysis as well?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that it's included, and, and your assessment's right, is that movement is, uh, can be unsafe. There's more vehicles using Park Street at that location. The new right turn lane, well, it's no longer re- new, but that we constructed in about twenty-sixteen or twenty-seven, has increased the number of vehicles uh, from Bendigo to Park Street. And uh, they're, 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 um, the radius, the curb return radius is fairly wide at that location, so cars can make that turn at twenty miles an hour, and all of a sudden, they're there. So the, the belief is from the traffic, traffic engineers, is that center line, that C curb in the median will um, create a safer situation um, by not, by no longer allowing left turns out of Bartels onto Park Street.
Brilliant, thank you.
Thank you. Did I catch everybody? Good? Okay, I'll proceed. The motion before us is to approve AB twenty-five dash zero one two, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with PH Consulting for the Park Street and Main Avenue Intersection Design Capital Project. Uh, not, an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars in a form and content approved by the city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again, everybody. Uh, we're gonna move on now to mayor, council administrator, concerns and initiatives. Brendan, I'm gonna have you take it away, since you're out there in the abyss. You can start us off.
Well, thank you.
Hopefully not the abyss, but.
No, I'm in Montana under a foot of, foot in some odd of snow, so we're good. Um, no, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, nothing too major. Uh, hopefully everybody's enjoying the snow, but also taking some great precautions there, and I would just like to uh, put out there that uh, Valley Center Stage uh, will be opening a, a family-friendly show, uh, comedy, funness. It's Treasure Island coming up here soon. So please check out the Salal Grange for the showings from Valley Center Stage on Treasure Island. Again, Valley Center Stage partners with the Grange. It's two nonprofits working together to, to bring about some positive light to the community, so check it out if you have a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torgason.
Um, with all the weather, just be careful out there while you're driving, and also look for people walking on the road.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
Um, so I didn't have very much snow at my house, but I did see our uh, Public Works and their snow plows out. They plowed my roads twice that I saw, and I was like, wow, thanks, guys or girls. Anyways, thank you very much for plowing our roads.
Thank you, um, Mr. Trimalata.
Uh, yeah, the snow may be coming, who knows? Uh, help your neighbors out, uh, shovel sidewalks so people can get out and walk uh, when the, the weather lets up, but uh, yeah, just a reminder to help each other out. Um, that's what we're here for. Thanks.
Mr. Jocelyn?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, a week from today, uh, all-day long council will be uh, gathering uh, to go through an annual retreat. I wanted to acknowledge uh, Lisa Escobar for all of her efforts in pulling it together, working with the facilitator. I wanted to acknowledge uh, council here tonight and Brendan uh, for accommodating, you know, taking time out of their busy lives to make it such that they'll be able to, for the vast majority of us, uh, for most of the time to be in attendance. That's not a small thing. Uh, so thank you. I also just wanna say that tomorrow in Olympia at noon is a gathering to defend democracy, and I will be there on the steps of the state capitol. If anyone else uh, wants to look into it, it's the five zero five zero one uh, movement. Thank you.
Mr. Jocelyn and Ms. Rustic. Uh, thank you. I don't have anything this evening. Great. Mr. Guttell?
Thank you. I'd like to just echo everybody's comment uh, about the snow and the snow removal, and appreciate the hard work that our staff has done to keep us safe. Uh, I too will be in Olympia, but it will be next, uh, it'll be Thursday, and it will be for the firefighters' legislature day out there advocating for funding for our public safety. So we're forward to seeing anybody that's out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo a couple of comments that were made earlier. All of our staff are providing exceptional services, and I, obviously I wanna note, which Councilmember Cohen had mentioned, and someone else here, about the city crews. They go out early morning, middle of the night, uh, obviously providing uh, all types of great service on those roads, which I think is very important. If folks wake up, they, I think they don't take it for granted. I know they appreciate it, but I also wanna uh, put a big shout out to our crew for doing that. Uh, the retreat, just to add to Councilor Jocelyn, staff preparing the council retreat uh, agenda packet, and we'll get that delivered to you folks on Thursday. This Thursday. And I also wanna note the public health and safety council meeting, but today I just wanted to acknowledge that the customers are coming in for that. I know it's taking part out of your busy day, but I think it was a good meeting held today, so thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, I've got a little bit to talk about. Uh, the city is seeking applicants to fill vacancies on the Business and Economic Development Commission. More information about the commission and how to submit an application is available on the news section of the city website. Application deadline is February twenty-eighth. Just a reminder, during this cold snap, you can find a map of the city's snowplow routes and street treatment information on our website. Map identifies priority one, two, and three snowplow routes throughout the city, limits as well as prior, priority access point locations. City offices will be closed Monday, February seventeenth, an observance of President's Day. Uh, council, a reminder that next Tuesday, February eleventh, as Mayor Protem mentioned, uh, you have a council retreat at Rainbow Lodge. I, I know none of you are gonna forget that, and I just wanna say I, I really deeply appreciate your efforts to coordinate your schedules in order to be uh, there, and I wanna thank Lisa Escobar for making this happen and all the hard work that it takes, so. Um, also, I wanna say that Citizens Academy Year Three began last night, and quite frankly, we have another great group of individuals, uh, community members who are very interested and intrigued about how our city works, and um, I think last night we, we showcased a, a level of care and wanting to talk and, and relate to people. So thank you, Bob Larson, for your, your kind and wonderful words and your presentation. And Kristy Lake, who's a phenomenon from the Historical Museum, she uh, always fills us up with a vast amount of knowledge in, in the history of um, North Bend. And I, and I just was happy to be there chatting with people and hearing the conversation begin and answering the questions as best I could. But I'll be planning on being at everyone from here on out, so I encourage all council members to join me, and maybe if you have the time to, to kinda come and witness or introduce yourself to these fine people as uh, the eight next weeks unfold before us. It's a great thing. Um, and everybody, I want you to be, please be safe out there. Yeah, we do have some ice still lurking around, and our public works team has done a great job thus far, so I really appreciate that as well. And I think we're gonna go into an executive, well, I know, we're gonna go into an executive session, so we will now recess for the meeting, for an executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW four-two, forty-two dot thirty dot one-one-zero-one-I. The executive session is expected to last sixty minutes, and as there's no action anticipated, as the result of the executive session, the videotaping of the meeting will stop at this time. Thank you, everybody. Have a great week.